Any changes to December?
Yes, since it was published last week, one board resolution regarding the Bosie's board vacancy was divided into three separate ones, so each one can be voted on independently.
Okay, and with that, I need a motion to improve the agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Ted, second by Dale. All in favor, I oppose, abstain, motion carry. We have a couple of presentations, and the first one we get to take a little bit of a field trip down to the auditorium.
Yes, so ladies and gentlemen, in the audience, we are going to head down to the auditorium. You are encouraged to come and join us, where it's going to be a brief presentation on the Festival Musical.
Can we get our steps in?
You know what's amazing? I mean, we've spent a lot of time since we did this, we did this so like for a preview because of COVID and being out for some years, so you'll notice any data. Two junior shows here for building up the program, we're really focusing on those younger high schoolers and the secondary intermediate level, so we're pretty excited to show you what we got. This is the Monahan Junior. The show is Friday and Saturday at seven PM and Sunday at two PM. I actually put two tickets in your program for you, so bring a guest and enjoy the show. This is one of my favorite things to do here. This is my thirteen show, absolutely love it. Very awesome. I hope you guys enjoy it. And I'm gonna turn it over to each faculty who is going to play on the scene that you are going to watch today.
Hi. So I'm Beth U. If you don't know me, I'm a senior, I'm only senior in our club, so primarily the young talent that we have. And if you don't know what's going on, we're gonna be performing our album, which is Malonius' "I Want" and we do a princess hat one and give the tux. Shows this because it's a real stand-up song from our Yana Jimerson. And this is, for context for you, this is after I received her father's storm off after saying that she does not mean to go beyond the reading. That's a terrible idea, but she does anyway, because that's what he truly wants. And I'm gonna hand this over to Yana Jimerson. We'll start.
Don't try to stop me. Ben, I'm going with you. Are you sure? Okay, here we go. Actually, we isn't strong. We're very far away. Okay. Now, do you see this is why we all go past three? Grandma, tell them. Are you gonna tell my dad I crashed the new ice car? I don't think he's right. How do you keep my feet in the village? If that's what you want, well, are you acting weird? I'm religious. That's my job. There's something you wanna tell me? Tell me. Wanting to tell me all of these words, but what? Do you really think our ancestors stayed in the reeds? Better believe that sea coral naturally is my dream. We sail to all oceans, artists to explore, passing all lessons. Someone now hearing it's the next.
We're gonna rest a bit. Gotta come on Friday, Saturday, or Sunday, seven seventy and two. And the three hours is now. Um, so yeah, we have, we should play Maui and even area playing Earth, which is coming up. And so we're really excited to be doing this, and so please come forward to rock up. Sorry about the tech issue with the mics, that's sort of the theme around here, so hopefully. I think they're already working on it, so.
We will be in full practice Friday.
Yes, and full set, so they actually, April and and your niece is back there like eight people crazy. And so. And we're just, yeah, there's our Maui. So yeah, we will be, we will be ready to vote, so please check out the show, all I got.
Thank you very much. All right. Thank you.
Next, we will move on to the budget presentation. So, so Karen is on.
Yes, Mrs. McGarra is joining us via Zoom here.
All right, can you hear me okay?
Yep. Yes.
All right, it works when you take the mute off. Uh, thank you for letting me do this remotely tonight. I'm feeling rather under the weather, so. Here we go, twenty-three, twenty-four proposed budget. Uh, once again. And if I can get this to work, there we go. All right, so our revenue is coming in tax-related. Three hundred ninety thousand five hundred dollars miscellaneous at one point three million. Fund balance reuse use of reserves at four point one two six. Indigenous tuition and transportation at twelve point seven. Impact aid at just under five million and state aid at twenty-seven million. You can see there is a huge increase in miscellaneous. Because of interest rates. Last year at this time, we had earned little over thirty thousand dollars in interest. And this year, we are at nearly one point six already. Uh, based on the funding that we have available in cash as well as the large increase in interest rates. Uh, and then the other couple of changes, impact aid went down primarily because of the increase in uh, interest earnings and also in state aid, as you can see, state aid went up almost three million dollars. And the state just doesn't give you anything without making you do something else. So because we have an increase in state aid, we also have a couple additional reports requirements that are due. Um, on top of that. So as you can see, it's about eight percent over um current year budget, and actually, the CPI increase for this year is eight percent as well, so we're really kind of uh, right along the line. Uh, once again, the tax levy will be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, no tax levy increase for the six year in a row. Staffing, retirements, we have two administrators, four teachers, four teacher assistants, three bus drivers and one monitor that are retiring. And then the new positions will be adding two confidential secretaries, one healthy living and drug prevention teacher, one social worker, one psychologist, a grants administrator, a special ed teacher, an ELA reading coach, and a D E O students at M T S S. Coordinator. As far as expenditures, what the state wants us to um tell you is admin programming capital. So the state wants me to tell you that we have five point six million dollars in administrative costs. We have thirty-nine and a half million dollars in program costs and six point three in capital. Uh, for a total of fifty-one, two, but that to me doesn't really tell you a whole lot. So I like to do it this way, in the blue, which is the salaries, we have a total of twenty-two point six million dollars, or forty-four percent of our budget is salaries. Benefits, uh, total another ten million. So if you look at this, we've got sixty-four percent of our budget is in people, which makes sense because we're a service industry essentially. Debt and transfer, we're at two point seven million dollars. Equipment, we're at one point nine contractual, we're at just under five million. Bosie's, we're up over seven million dollars now with Bosie's um services, and then materials and supplies, we're at one point two. For a total of fifty-one point two million dollars. For our next year's budget. So the state required property tax report card is something that we have to go over, we have to approve, and then has to go out to um, the community at large. So it just shows, you know, current year versus what next year looks like. So we're currently at forty-seven point four. Excuse me, we're going to fifty-one, two. Taxes, two hundred fifty thousand dollars. We could have raised our taxes a little bit. Um, but we didn't, and whoops. Sorry about that. And um. We're leaving it at the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Again, this is the calculation or partial tech calculation for the tax cap. These are adjusted fund balance numbers. This is our actual last year. This is where I think we're going to be appropriated unrestricted. And so we're going, my projection is that we're gonna go from sixty-two down to thirty-two. That's primarily because we're using a lot of cash for uh, phase four capital project. And then here's a schedule of our reserves. This is where we are right now. With each one of our reserves, capital reserve at little over five million. As you can see, my projected balance going to six thirty is five and a half million. That half million dollars isn't from us putting anything in, but it's directly from interest earnings on that funding. Repair reserve is projected to go from one point six down to six, and that's because we're using it um, in current fiscal year to pay for two of the items in the phase four budget, which is the HVAC system in the pool and the um, new freight elevator. The workers' comp uh is projected to go from three sixteen down to two fifty. Unemployment from six seventy-eight to six seventy-eight. Um, nothing's gonna happen with this. We're moving all the interest reserves into, um, excuse me, into general fund. And what I wanna do at next, um, it'll be the next meeting in May, that I'm gonna recommend that we pull a half a million dollars out of here and put it up into capital reserve. Because our unemployment reserve is actually overfunded at this point in time. Ablar, we're at one point two. The difference will be interest earnings, retirement contribution, we're at one, we're down to three. That's because fifty percent of the um annual expenses brought over um, into the general fund to pay for that. And then the other reserve is the teachers' reserve, we're at little over one million dollars right now. Uh, projected at one point one for the end of the year based on interest earnings. What don't we know? State aid. Um, we still don't have a state budget, so we're not sure that um, you know, the number that I have way back here of um, where do we go here? Of this twenty-seven million dollars. You know, we're making a budget assumption based on this number, but the state doesn't have a budget yet, so I don't know if this number is gonna go up or down. Regardless of what the state does, our taxes are going to remain flat at two hundred fifty thousand. Any change in the state aid number will also be reflected as a change in the impact aid number. So if the state aid number happens to go up, our impact aid number will go down. If state aid happens to go down, then our impact aid number will go up. To cover that difference. Um, so that's really, you know, that's the biggest thing right now is, is any state aid stuff. The other unknown is always is enrollment fluctuations. If we happen to get a special ed kid in that, um, you know, has um, an I E P that has a lot of costs associated with it, that could affect the budget, but it could also go that we have a student that has an I E P currently that may be leaving. So you know, those fluctuations are up and down all the time and um, something we kind of just have to deal with. And that's all I have for tonight. Are there any questions?
Thanks, Karen.
Thanks.
Next, we move on to our consent agenda. So we need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Carrie. Second by Flip. Are there any questions? All in favor?
I.
Opposed, staying, motion carry. Under new business, we have the Bosie's annual budget for twenty-three, twenty-four. So we need a motion to approve Bosie's budget.
Second.
Motion by Brad. Second by Carrie. Are there any questions? All in favor? I oppose, abstain, motion carry. Item B is the Area One vacancy. And that is casting a ballot for Monica Combs. So we need a motion to cast that vote.
Motion.
Motion by Dale.
Second.
Second by Ted. Are there any questions? All in favor?
I.
I.
Opposed, abstain, motion carry. Um, MC is the board vacancy for Area Four. Um, and that is for Candace Clemmons. So we need a motion to cast that vote for Area Four.
Okay.
Motion by Brad.
Second.
Second by Flip. Are there any questions? All in favor?
I.
I. Oppose, abstain, motion carry. Item D is the vacancies for Area Nine, and that is for Danielle O'Connor. I'm casting a vote for her term, so we need a motion to cast that vote.
Motion.
Motion by Flip. Back end, sorry. Second by Brad. Are there any questions?
Just a comment.
Okay.
Um. Danielle is now within in our service area in Chautauqua County. So I just want to point it out. You know, part of the service area that that our Bosie's by service services to does not extend into into Chautauqua County. And as she's a resident, especially.
So do you feel that we shouldn't vote for her, Dale?
I'm going to vote no.
What happens if we do vote no on this? It just, we just don't cast that as a district?
We just don't cast it. While we we still cast these votes for the other two.
Okay. Then we have a motion by Flip, seconded by Brad. All in favor? Opposed?
Opposed.
So, just so I have this right on the record, there was no one in favor. Six opposed. Uh, motion. Okay. All right. Thank you very much for throwing this in on there. Uh, item E is to adopt the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. In the amount of fifty-one million, two hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars. Um, and also to note that the reserves uh might be adjusted depending on what the state budget comes in. So we need a motion to approve the budget.
Motion.
Motion by Ted, second by Carrie. Are there any questions? All in favor? All in favor?
I.
I. Opposed, abstain, motion carry. Item F is our uh school property tax report card for twenty-three, twenty-four. And our tax levy. So we need a motion to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four property tax report card, community tax levy.
What?
Motion by Carrie, second by Brad. Are there any questions? All in favor?
I.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Item G is our school calendar for twenty-three, twenty-four. So we need a motion to approve the calendar.
Motion.
Second. Motion by Ted, second by Dale. Are there any questions on the calendar? All in favor?
I.
I. Opposed, abstain, motion carry. And then item seven is just our board information reports, our capital project summary, our enrollment, transportation report. Um, and then a report for a conference that Dr. Simmons attended and then our upcoming events. Um, the twentieth is our personal instructions. And service planning meeting eight AM in the superintendent's office, April twenty-first through the twenty-second. Um. Will be the high school musical. So I hope everybody enjoyed what they got to see. So maybe there'll be a lot of people coming out for that. On the twenty-third, the musical will be held at two PM in the yard. And then twenty-fifth will be the next Board of Education meeting. Which I will be at new handle. I'll be in the phone. In the twenty-third. Maybe Dale?
I'm potentially going to be at our cross game.
Well, everybody will be here on the twenty-third. I'm going to be at it. I'm going to be in Washington. I can, but it doesn't count if I remote in, correct?
You can remote in. You can't vote, right?
I just can't vote. So we have a forum.
We can vote. We um approved that it
Yeah.
We approved a resolution to allow that.
That's right.
For extreme circumstances. So does it work?
It is.
It is.
Yeah.
It is.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, then.
Music.
I'll zoom. But you can run if you run it just to this kind of a little awkward.
Okay, I'll um, I'll be at the cross game. So I probably will not be at the board meeting next Tuesday.
Okay. All right. And then May third will be our National Honor Society Columbia Awards dinner.
Will we probably have a forum though? We should be.
Is there anybody not going to be here besides me and Carrie? Okay. Okay. All right. With that, we need a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of personal.
Motion.
Motion by Carrie. My flip. All in favor?
I.
Opposed, staying, motion carry. Thank you everyone for coming tonight. I don't think we're going to take any action.
Thanks, everyone.
If you have any slips.